I say that on wine, too.
The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings are now in session. Today is February 12th, 2019. The time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, God and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call.
Council Authority Member District One Louise Uribe.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fosse.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Three Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There are no changes to the agenda. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Seeing none, we go on to public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments are limited to a maximum of five minutes per person. Under state law, matters presented during public period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purpose, state your name and city of residence. Is there any public comment?
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name's Toby Von Alvin Slaven. I live seven miles outside of Riverbank City in Escalon, where I've raised a family of three for the last 25 years. I'm a local real estate investor, entrepreneur, who has been seeking a permit in the City of Riverbank to open a cannabis dispensary for more than a year now. Excuse me, this is not what I do for a living. I wasn't sure where this venture was going to lead me, but my family and I have never backed down or been afraid of a new opportunity. I lost my wife in 2017 in a motorcycle accident. After seeing what prescription drugs has done to so many, I seeked an alternative medicine to help me cope with my loss. Due to the tremendous amount of support with my community, my friends, my family, my children, I did find a substitute to doctor prescribed drugs, CBD. I can't say that that experience alone made me want to buy a building and become involved in owning a dispensary, but my positive experience with CBD sparked my interest in a newly emerging cannabis industry. As entrepreneur and a widower, still raising three children, I saw an opportunity to get on a ground floor, to get on the ground floor of a new legal business with the potential to support my family. I also saw a chance to take an area of Riverbank that is in desperate need of redevelopment and start the process of old, outdated building with prison fencing and transform it into a property pleasing to the eye. I'm in Riverbank one to three times a day, and I've chosen to shop here, groceries, dine, buy my building materials, office supplies, watch a movie, and have a drink with a friend. My family and I have flipped houses on most of the state named streets in Riverbank off of Santa Fe. We've rebuilt and added on a house that caught fire on Jackson Street, and now I've bought a commercial building in desperate need of remodel. My wife was a cosmetologist for over 30 years. She moved from one salon to another. Her clients followed her from all surrounding cities, Sacramento, Bay Area. I go to El Ranchito for Margarita Mondays, now Wednesdays, and their lunch special. I go to La Peria for their shrimp cocktails. I go to Nifty's Restaurant for breakfast, O'Brien's for meats, and Garcia Markets for Pico de Gallo and my salsa. What I'm trying to say is that we all have certain places we go because of convenience, price, location, experience, or the people. Will three dispensaries in a community of roughly 25,000 people be too many? I'm not sure what the answer is, but I do know that there is not one dispensary that is owner operator. I also know that we have three grocery stores that are no more than 200 feet from each other in the older downtown area. We have six fast food restaurants that are with 200 to 600 feet apart. We have many gas stations, liquor stores, ethnic restaurants, and larger chain restaurants. We truly feel we will not be competing with the other two dispensaries, but rather complementing them. We feel that we will be marketing a different generation and will not have a detrimental impact on the two existing dispensaries, but rather a bonus for the city to increase the public benefit funds, decrease traffic congestion, and all grow together, building our clientele to serve the various needs of Riverbank and the surrounding cities. So I stand here in front of you and ask you please reconsider the cannabis dispensary moratorium and allow us, being the third, to contribute to the community of Riverbank, law enforcement, and parks and recreation, et cetera, and truly become part of City of Action. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff, city residents of Riverbank. My name is Deanna Garcia, and I'm a board member of FFA Inc., the Riverbank Cannabis Collective located at 6609 Third Street in downtown Riverbank, the core of the downtown. The reason why I'm here this evening is to voice my concern of the location of the third proposed cannabis dispensary coming to the City of Riverbank. The location would be at the corner of Third Street. This is the road our business is on, right at the corner, only 110 feet away from our location. We feel this would be detrimental to our business. We have just opened our doors in late December of 2018, and at this time, we are struggling to meet our monthly budget. We come to the City of Riverbank to help the community to revitalize and bring business to the downtown core. We are not in the busy part of the town, nor are we on the main street. We are proudly located in the core of downtown, which is a great location to be, but we are not, and we do not have, the drive-by traffic of the main road. If the City of Riverbank was to allow the storefront to open at the corner of us on the main road, just think about what it would do to our business and how it would affect our business. As it is, we are struggling to bring people off the main highways and into the downtown core. We're excited for this summer with the barbecue shop and other businesses opening in the downtown core. We want to help to rebuild the downtown area and be a part of the community's growth. We are grateful for the opportunity to be a business owner in downtown Riverbank. I am very happy the City of Riverbank is welcoming more cannabis businesses into the city. I am very proud of each one of you for being the City of Action. I hope more cities will take the action that this city is taking. I also welcome more cannabis businesses to the area and hope to work with them in building a relationship with the ones that are coming and the ones that are already here. The business that wants to come in will be located 110 feet away from my business. I'm asking the City of Riverbank representatives to please think about what that would do to my building and my business. We also welcome more businesses to the City of Riverbank and look forward to the city's growth. Flavors is 1.4 miles away from us. That is a good distance. Competition is good, and it helps the cities to grow and for the cities to be healthy. But this is not healthy competition 110 feet away from our door. Sorry, this is really, really a strong, really strong to my heart, because we came here to Riverbank to bring a good dispensary to serve Generation X, 1965 to 1970, the Baby Boomers, 1946 to 1964, the Silent Generation, 1945, which is our elderly community. We are here building these communities with education, love, and respect. The products and services we are focusing on are for these communities. We are working very hard to bring education of cannabis to Riverbank and to the population that has had a stigma of cannabis for a very long time, their whole lifetimes, and we are here to help them to know that cannabis is here to help them and to help them to live a better quality of life. And we just ask that the City of Riverbank and the representatives of the city, the City of Action, please think about what it would do to our business to have another dispensary 110 feet away from our dispensary on the main road. As it is, we're trying to bring traffic down in here and into the core. You know, we're visiting other businesses here. We're making relationships with them. We're working with the Chamber of Commerce of Riverbank to bring something special into the core of downtown, and we feel this location would just take traffic outside of the core of downtown and not bring it into the core of downtown. And I just come up here tonight and ask for you to think about the location. Other cannabis businesses in this community would be awesome. We welcome them. We want to work with them. We just ask for you to choose locations of these new dispensaries where it's not detrimental to, to the dispensaries that are already here and up and running. Thank you for your time.
Any further public comment?
Thank you. I appreciate your time. My name's Richard Von Alvin Slaven. Actually from Newcastle, California. I'm cousins with Toby. After my cousin Toby's wife Gina passed, we were spending a lot of time together. Families, everything, do the Vons. He called me and asked me to come to town and look at some real estate to buy and sell. I met him. We looked at a half a dozen homes, and I looked at him and said, "We need to invest our time and money into a new industry." We talked for hours about the cannabis industry. My wife Tiffany and I have been involved at that time for over five years, growing cannabis, developing farms, consulting, and designing and consulting in the dispensary side. Toby and I went to Santa Cruz after that conversation, San Jose, Sacramento, Modesto, and started putting offers on properties for cultivation, negotiating the purchase of a dispensary in Santa Cruz. We spent three days looking and driving. We both went home, and two days later Toby called me and said, "I got it." I said, "You got what?" He goes, "I bought the best fixture upper in Riverbank that is going to be the best dispensary in town." After seeing it and spending days doing our due diligence, we decided this is it. The main reason was Toby was determined to keep his money investments local. Our dispensary complements. The competition, it does not directly compete. I appreciate what she said. I'm from Sacramento, and we're in an area, not based on our decision, based on the green zone that was decided through the, through the city. Our partners have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in research and development and found that there's a huge missing part in the industry. Our focus, our whole focus is Baby Boomers Soccer Moms. Most dispensaries, customer base is 20 to 35 years old. I am 53 years old. Seven years ago, I went to dispensary, and it scared the living heck out of me. I was lost. I didn't know what to ask for. I was intimidated, and I didn't understand the benefits that was there for you and I and other people. And there wasn't a dispensary that I could find throughout Northern California that could focus on my age group who didn't grow up in the era of today's kids to understand it. And when my wife and I decided this was a point we wanted to go into, we really wanted to focus on the Baby Boomers education and other things. We have partnered with a company called Colas. It's based out of Sacramento. Partners, they are partners in over 10 dispensaries in Northern California. They have a 10-year track record and are known for their innovations, compliance, security, and success. Colas has been working with the State of California for years in assisting in compliance, legislation, SOPs, and security. Colas is one of the first duplicatable dispensaries with the same menu, SOPs, trainings, and code of ethics. It's like walking into a Starbucks or a Dunkin' Donuts. When people pass by from San Jose or San Francisco and see a Colas in Riverbank, they will know what we have and what to expect. It creates comfortability. My area in this partnership with Toby and my wife is development design, relationships with farms throughout California, distribution relationships in unique products and brands. My construction company has been developing cultivation centers, distribution centers, manufacturing centers, and dispensaries for five years from Humboldt to Santa Barbara. In fact, I have a big project coming up in April in Oakdale. We, as a company, are ready to go. We have submitted plans to the city over a year ago. We could pull our demo permit tomorrow and start working. We can have a full set of plans ready for the city review in 10 days. After city review and sign off, we could be up and running in 90 to 120 days. This is what my construction company does day in and day out. At this point, we own the land, paid permit application fees, gave our $30,000 deposit a year ago, and are invested over $350,000 and own our property. We do not have a landlord. It's very important in the industry, and for those of you that don't know, a lot of landlords, people put people out of business due to try to raising the rents. We are all involved in this paradigm shift. Its times have changed once again. We, as family, we're all in. We have shut down businesses preparing for this. This is not a type, a part-time venture. We are under the understanding that we would be in demo mode three weeks ago. I had crews ready to go. That was our mistake. We thought it was the start of our new family journey, family owned and ran. We are all in, and your decision affects three large families. We are third-generation Californians and local in town. We are not from the East Coast coming to California to make a buck in the green rush. We are focused and determined, business people wanting to make a difference.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yeah. We're asking you to allow the third application to go through, and we feel we should not be part of the moratorium. We understand the concern that too many is too fast, is not healthy for the city, but based on the revenue numbers, there is a lot of room for three. Without a dispensary, the industry fails. The black market thrives. It takes at least three dispensaries for every one farm. The product needs to get to the end user. The people of Riverbank, surrounding areas, and folks traveling through town should have a variety and choice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Seeing none, we're going to go to the consent calendar, consistent of Item 3A, waiver readings. Item 3B, approval of January 8th, 2019, City Council on Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Stanislaus County Public Health Officer as City of Riverbank Public Health Officer. Do I have any items to be pulled or any recommendations?
I make a recommendation that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second.
Council Authority Member Campbell?
Yes.
Council Authority Member Fosse?
Yes.
Council Authority Member Uribe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 61, consider a resolution to approve the waiver of storm drain system development fees for NNNN Retail Development Dollar General Project located at 5842 Roselle.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Planning and Building Manager Donna Kenny will give this report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As stated, this is a fee waiver request from Dollar General. So, let's see. What are system development fees? They provide adequate and constant method of financing the unfunded portions of the systems that are needed across the city for our residents as well as commercial projects. It helps promote the orderly and efficient expansion of public improvements. It ensures the continuation of necessary services, including police and general administrative services. It establishes equitable methods for minimizing public facility and service costs. And it's charged to new construction, including the expansion of or additions to non-residential structures. So these are the fees, the estimated fees for Dollar General. As you can see, there are streets and public work fees that exceed $50,000, water fees, wastewater fees, the storm drain is almost $40,000, police fees, no parks and recreation because this isn't a residential project, and then administrative fees. The only fee that they are requesting to waive is the storm drained fee. These, this project was heard by the Planning Commission a couple months back, and the project itself has a large, about 9,000 square foot building and parking lot and the associated landscaping that comes with it. The rear half of the project, of the project site, about a quarter of that to a half of that is a storm drain basin that will be landscaped and accommodate the water from the property itself will flow there to percolate down. They still have another quarter to a half of that back area where a basin could be expanded in the future if need be. They intend to fence that off to keep out homeless setting up any housing back there and tend to keep it, intend to keep it weed-free. So for this reason, the fact that they're bringing all the, keeping the storm water onsite to percolate, they are requesting to only waive the $37,000. As part of the project, they will be undergrounding utilities at the site, and after speaking with PG&E, this means that they're going to have to underground and actually tunnel under Roselle Avenue to do the work that they need to do, which you can imagine is quite expensive. So the request of waiving the $37,000 would help go towards those costs. They would pay all the other fees, which are estimated to be about $95,000. And so for those reasons, staff does recommend that you consider this petition and either approve the fee waiver or not, or yes, or not approve the fee waiver, excuse me. There we go. There we go. Deny the request. David Church from Dollar General is here on behalf of Dollar General. So if you have any questions for me or for Mr. Church, we'd be happy to answer those for you. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, I do have one. Sorry. So you mentioned that they were going to connect to, under Roselle?
Yes.
Okay, and so there's stuff on the other side of the road that is underground already? What are they connecting to?
Well, right now, the power on that side of the street where their project is located, I believe there's some wires that come across to their side. So those would have to be underground in Roselle, so theirs would be completely underground at the front part of their project.
Okay. I think I understand. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I guess I should have gone out and taken a photo.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
What's the purpose of the storm water drain system?
The system or the, just the basin, or both?
No, for us complying with storm water drain, you know, collecting.
Well, each project is to keep the-
Not the project overall.
I was leading into that.
No, just answer where I want.
Overall, okay. Overall is to take the storm water away from the city, to keep roads and properties from flooding.
Right, and prevent any spillage into-
The river. Yes.
Or any other wetlands.
Correct.
If we keep waiving storm water fees, how are we going to accomplish the end goal?
It could be difficult, yes.
With no money, you can't build it.
Correct.
Okay. So, and you're still recommending that we don't?
I was recommending you either waive the fee or you deny the request. In this instance, I can see as a planner how their project might have minimal effect upon our system, but you are correct. The system could fail, and the last thing we want to do is to have storm water go into the river and be fined by the state.
When must we, we, as a city, be fully compliant to MS4?
When, did you say?
Yes.
At all times.
Pardon?
At all times. Every new project that comes in need to meet those water standards. But also when the city looks at revising our fees, we also look at how projects would impact our system. And in this case, the impact is minimal compared to other projects that- that wouldn't have the capacity to store that much storm water onsite. So you do have positives and you do have negatives in this request.
Any other questions? Thank you, Donna. Are there any public comments?
Hi, Council members and Mayor. I'm David Church with Triple Net Retail Development. And, you know, appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and make this request on behalf of the city. And one thing I just wanted to point out is what we have designed on our site, and really the intent here was to figure out how to make our project, you know, viable from a financial point of view. It's kind of always a challenge in development, especially for our particular client. You know, how we come about and design a project is always at the forefront of, you know, whether we can make a project work or not. So one of the key things on this site that we did look at and that I do want to convey is just the fact that we don't think we're going to be contributing at all to your storm system. We do have extra land, and if there was at all a concern that either our system, you know, at a larger event, you know, a bigger storm or something, if we needed to oversize our basin onsite to even accommodate adjacent properties or a worst-case event, we would be happy to do that. Because our intent is not to try to, you know, not pay for something that, you know, that we should on behalf of the city. The intent was really to design a project that does not contribute whatsoever to the city's system. And therefore, we're trading off and trying to make the overall project work by designing and building our site such that we're not costing the city anything and keeping all of our storm water completely self-contained. So that was our intent. Happy to again answer any other questions and just appreciate the opportunity to hopefully try to figure out a way to shave some costs and make our project viable.
I do understand the shaving of the costs, but we as a city are trying to develop a storm water system throughout to where as one area may get more or have more storm water issues, that that water can be transferred around until such time as it can be mitigated without affecting Stanislaus River or any other of the wetlands that surround us. So without funding for it, it makes that impossible. Would you consider a delay in those payments? Of course, we just had an iconic structure here that we did not waive the fees. We delayed payment of those fees to up to 10 years. And they have significant costs to renovate that area as well as significant development fees.
You know, I certainly appreciate that, and that was something that Donna had actually recommended and discussed with us. We're, I guess for lack of a better term, we're merchant developers. So we develop these properties and we typically sell them within a year to two years tops. So unfortunately for us, we basically have to capitalize all of our costs. So even if it's a, if it's a delay in a future cost, we would ultimately have to pay that at the time we sell it. So that benefit doesn't really help us when we're looking at it upfront. So I certainly appreciate that, but it, it's just something that our model and the way we develop properties doesn't really help us. I'd much prefer a way to figure out, again, can we mitigate our fees to some extent? You know, knowing that we're not, you know, contributing to the system at all. I certainly appreciate the fact that new development needs to help maybe pay for upgrades for things that we're not a part of, but that the overall city needs. So I think, you know, from our standpoint, any form of economic help in the form of a reduction or elimination of the fee is really what we're, what we're seeking. So, appreciate it.
Any further public comment? Any questions for?
Just one comment. We've had this come up several times, and we've been generous in the past. But I think too, you are a part of this. Even if you make your own storm drain system, you're still a part of what's going on in the, in the community. And I have, I have to agree with our mayor that we have to look at the cost of this because it's gigantic. And, you know, I would favor, if you could defer them going with something like that, than just outright doing away with it. Because I think we need this money to help us get to where we're getting. And you are going to be, you know, attached to the city in your own way. Thank you.
Okay. Any recommendations on this from the council? Any further discussion? How about from the staff? Okay.
It's summarized actually pretty appropriately with the discussion back and forth. It's, this is a, an absolutely appropriate decision one way or the other. There are any number of ways to deal with it.
So even if we consider a lower amount instead of the 37, like maybe 25?
I'll go half. I would consider half. And in the, in the event that as we're finishing our storm water system, theirs will be part of our system for retention, collection, and then we pump out into the appropriate MID lateral or wherever.
Yeah, I'd be okay with a reduction also.
I'd be okay with that.
Yep.
And that's probably, that's appropriate, I think, too, because one component that wasn't really discussed is while onsite, everything's managed, what's not managed is the public right-of-way that they will be constructing in front, which will have curb gutter and sidewalk and approaches that water will fall on or pool on the side of the road.
And any other hard surfaces?
That'll go into the system.
Okay, we'll make a recommendation, please.
I move that we go with half fees, as just suggested, for this particular item.
I second it.
Well, motion to reduce the storm water fees for item 6.1 for NNN Retail Development to 50%. Propose. And a second.
Council Members Campbell?
Yes.
Fosse?
Yes.
Uribe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6.2, bid award for 2019 Cheese and Wine Festival.
Thank you, Mayor. Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director Parks and Rec will give this report.
Mayor, members of the council, just a quick review of the Cheese and Wine Festival for members of the community who maybe aren't familiar with it. The Cheese and Wine Festival has been held in Riverbank for the past 42 years. 29 years it was run by the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce, and then it was sold to the Rotary Club, Riverbank Rotary Club. And they ran the festival for eight years. And at some point decided that they did not, were not able to do that any longer. And the event was either going to die or it was presented to the city to possibly take the event over. So after a lot of deliberation, the city decided that we would purchase the event from the Rotary Club and contract out the book of the festival to help the Parks and Rec Department because our department is pretty small. So for the past five years, the Parks and Rec Department has worked in conjunction with Chris Ricky Presents. And I think the event overall has been successful. It hasn't been perfect, but it's been financially stable, and I think the community has enjoyed the event. After this fifth year, we decided that we would send out a request for proposal and see if there was any other, any other festival promoters or nonprofit groups that might want to put in a bid just with new ideas or just kind of send that out. So we did send out 10 proposals in December. And we, they were out for about five weeks. They were due in January, and we received two back. So tonight, we wanted to kind of talk about the results of the proposals and also give council some options on giving us direction on how to proceed for the festival in 2019 coming up in October. So one of the proposals that we received were from Chris Ricky Presents. And Chris has coordinated the festival for the past five years. He has years of experience with large-scale festivals. The events have been safe and well-attended over the past five years. And his proposal was for $16,000 for the contract. The second proposal we received was from the food dude catering, or Zachary Fisher. And Zachary is the owner of the Beards and Brew Barbecue Festival that's held in Turlock at the fairgrounds. I think it's occurred over the past two years. He's eager, he was eager to bring festival back to how it was years ago. He's from Riverbank, kind of seen the festival over the years. He's a chef and owner of the catering, of a catering business. And his proposal was 20% of the profit. So our profit is usually about $10,000, give or take. So he would take 2,000. If it was 30,000, he would make 6,000. So that was the way that that agreement would have been. After the proposals were reviewed and we interviewed both, after a lot of, you know, discussion, it came to be that we recommend that the contract be awarded to Chris Ricky Presents. And basically, that was because of the level of experience. So with that being said, there's four options that we wanted to present to the city that we came up with to hopefully have the city council give us direction on which way to go this year. With option one being, oops, did I do that?
No, there's some sort of wiring problem. I'm not sure.
Option one, award the bid to Chris Ricky Presents Incorporated. Move forward that. City would still do the vendor portion that we do because we feel that that works best, and we've learned a lot over the years. Option two would be discontinue the festival and begin a new downtown festival. What we would do in that case was we would come back with council, to council with an idea and, for a new festival that we would, we would do. I'm not going to move my hand because that's what it does.
Is this happening throughout?
Option three, city-
Just this.
Sorry. Parks and Rec to run, I'll hurry up. City Parks and Rec to run the event with a nonprofit group handling the cheese and wine component. So what would happen in that case is our Parks and Rec Department would run the event, and then we would look for a nonprofit or two to take over the cheese and wine component. And that is doable. Probably not this year. That's why we put 2020 because we would need time to find that nonprofit or two that would be able to take that component over. Option four, make the event available to run as a non-city event, kind of like when it was done by Rotary or, or the Chamber. And, or sell the event to the highest bidder. And that's something we could do as well. I'll come back to this slide in a minute. Financial impact, option one, two, and four would have no financial impact to the general fund. Option three, if we did break off the event and contract the, the cheese and wine component separately, there is a risk because all of the components depend on each other. So if we did break that off and it was unsuccessful, then there might be a financial risk. So, going to go back to the options. Is there any questions or want to just talk about the options?
A question about awarding the bid. The $16,000 that was proposed, is the event, that $16,000 really, for clarification, does it come out of the general fund? Or has the event made that $16,000 or $15,000 to pay for it?
It's covered in the event cost. So-
I'm saying though, we have made that money back so that we can continue it year after, well, in the past years.
Yes, so every year, we haven't touched the general fund, and we have funds in the bank.
That was my question. Thank you.
I thought one of our reasons for taking this out to bid was so that Parks and Rec wouldn't have to be involved. But you're suggesting in option one, again, to have control over the vendors.
Yes, and I don't think the reasoning for going out to bid was so we wouldn't be involved. I think that the event has been successful because we have been involved. I think as the group effort, I would like to pull away a little bit. Now that we've got five years, it's almost like a business. We're, we're pretty solid now. I feel comfortable backing away a little bit because I, I didn't want to lose money and I wanted to make sure everything went well. I was probably more involved than I should be. The vendor part, I think that it works well coming, with the vendors coming through the city because the funds go through the city and we're able to handle that portion of it. Although Chris Ricky would still recruit all the vendors and be a bit, large part of that. We would be doing more of the processing and the placement.
Have you had anybody inquire about purchasing the event? Like you were saying in option four?
Yeah, not purchasing the event, but we haven't put it out there.
And there's no community organizations, maybe sitting in the audience, that have thought about taking over?
So I like option one, but leading into option four. So I'd like to see the city step away from the festival and giving it to a nonprofit. That's just my opinion.
Are there any more discussions? You're not done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just waiting for direction. Yes.
I'd like to make one comment. I would like to see it continue just for the following reasons. One, it's our only really big festival right now that we have, and it does bring people to this community. And last year, I was privileged when I was participating in it, hearing several new people say, gee, we didn't even know this town was here, and they did anything like this. So it, it is advertising us somewhat. It's paying for itself, and we are working on improving it because it's not costing us anything. It does give us at least one big festival that's out there in the public that does attract more public to us. And I would like to eventually see it go to the nonprofits too, but I just don't know if we're ready there yet or not.
It is a lot of work, and it is, there's a lot of components. We didn't really know while we saw Rotary doing it and the Chamber doing it until we did it, how, there is a lot of components, and it takes a lot to do, but it is the only downtown event. And, and that means a lot to us as well. We, we don't want to give up on it because it is something the community enjoys.
Chris, can I ask you a question? Do you have any plans this year or any ideas to make it more of a event that people attend? And like last year, I got a lot of comments about the vendors were the little toys and stuff, and they wanted to see more substantial type of vendors, homemade things, and bigger like it was a couple of years ago. Do you have any ideas that you're presenting this year that will make it a larger event and more traction, more advertising? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I mean, like, it's challenging because people have a perception of this event that it was what it was in like 1985 or whatever, right? And it's, it's not, and it's never going to be, right? So what it needs to do, rather than us trying to make it something that it was, we have to make it what it's going to be, right? And so for this year, my vision is to try to, you know, Riverbank's about family. Trying to embrace family more, right? And so what we're doing is we're going to be creating, building off some of the successes from this year. Like this year, we had these game centers. We had a game center kind of right by the youth stage with like Giant Connect Four and Giant Uno. And, and people were playing, they're playing those. The kids were playing those games all day long, right? And so we say, okay, so this is something that we could really build on. So we're planning on doing at least half a dozen game stations throughout the whole event to give people something to do. And so it's like some of those things, like maybe we'll do like a Pinewood Derby and have like, you could build a Pinewood Derby car, race it, that kind of stuff. So when you get families come in, you know, father and his daughter can come in and build a, build a Pinewood Derby car, race it, that kind of stuff, you know? So we're designing activities that you can come into the festival with your family, spend little or no money, have a three or four-hour experience, and just remember like, hey, I went to downtown Riverbank. We had a really good time. And in addition to that, not just about families, but also like our wine tasting right now is in the Antigua Center, which is a really great facility. You guys are lucky to have it here in downtown Riverbank. But expanding that experience, because the, our sales, if you look at our sales for our, for our wine tasting, they've been going up, right? But we're starting- we're starting to get to the point where like, we're running out of room. So, what we want to do is expand that experience outside of the actual wine tasting venue. And so, putting up, last year, we did the French Wine Cafe that featured real French wines, right? So, we want to try, and you could taste those. What we want to do is have tasting outside the wine area also. So, when you go to the Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival, you can actually do a tasting like you would if you went up to Murphy's. You could go and do a tasting at, you know, half a dozen different stations throughout the festival also. So, if you don't want to go and do the tasting in, at the Antigua, you could just kind of do something a little more casual and maybe have a... Right. And so, that should help with vendors. To go back to your original question though, about the types of vendors and that kind of stuff, right? The types of vendors reflect the demographics of your community and what you can sell, right? So, like, we're, we're losing kind of like the antique vendors and stuff like that because we're not, it's not of anything that anybody was doing. This was happening before I came on board. If the people aren't selling the stuff, they're not going to come, right? So, we have to work to try to get people that are going to spend that kind of, those kind of dollars and those kind of items. We have to make this event appealing to them. It sounds easy. It's not easy. It's hard. So, that's what we're trying to do, right? And your, your criticism is super valid, but it's, it's just, it's a tough hill to climb, right? But we're trying to climb it.
Would you be willing to do a workshop and invite residents and maybe, maybe staff to just kind of go over some ideas? Would you be open to something like that?
I'd love to do that. You know, and like some of the ideas, well, whether we can talk about in the workshop, but we've got lots of ideas. Like, one of the ideas we have is to create an incentive for local businesses and residents to participate in the festival as a vendor, right? So, we have some ideas for that. I don't want to like throw it out here in the public until we've kind of approved it, you know? But we have some ideas, some strategies to do that.
And since we're competing with so many festivals, just throwing this out there, are we set on that weekend? Can we possibly move it to a weekend before that, change the date? Just curious.
Um, we can do whatever we want, right? Do I recommend it when you've got a 50-year, 43-year-old festival? No, I think that we're, they should be moving theirs because we're there.
Chris, I've got a question for you. Your vendors that you have, how many of them return? What's your percentage?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I think it's about three quarters.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at our surveying, three quarters of the people said they'd come back.
So, at least 75% of them feel that it's successful enough they won't want to return to. I think that's a plus for you.
Yeah.
Over the last five years, your presence for the festival has morphed quite significantly from what it was when you took it over, similar to what the Rotary Club had, to now it's more family oriented. I'd like to see that continue to morph. I'd like, last year was extremely beneficial to families, young kids. The Hispanic section, the horses, is really expanding. And as, as that expands, then that will be taken actually option two in the next five years. So, I'd like you to continue what you were doing, changing family orientation. You know, you don't have to have the big venue. You can have the smaller venues where you're not spending whatever the ticket price is and that you're forced to be in there for that length of time where you can casually have cheese and wine on the corner.
Yeah.
I, I did appreciate that. And I heard a lot of, a lot more positives this last cheese and wine. And I look forward, if you receive the award, to go continue, but to continue in such a way that we morph this to essentially in five years, a totally different than it was ten, five years ago.
Question for Sue. Right now, the city, what kind of involvement do we have in getting sponsorship? And thank you, Chris. I don't mean to cut you off, but...
We have about four or five sponsors that are annual sponsors. So, what I do is, pretty soon, in the next couple of months, I would send out letters letting them know we are doing the festival again and would they consider being a sponsor again. And then that comes through and Chris does his portion of the sponsorships as well. I do the, pretty much the annual ones that are, have taken care of our event over the past five years.
So, but the majority of the sponsorship is, relies with Chris, right? Getting the sponsors?
I think it's probably 50/50.
Okay.
Wouldn't you say, Chris?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to see us not spend so much on that piece of it if we can. The city has a whole lot of other projects that we need to, you know, make sure get taken care of too. So, if we could maybe cut back some and...
Sponsors?
Yeah, and shift it more. I'd like to see that if we can. Thank you.
So, what is our direction? Staff, oh, any public comment on this item?
Good evening. I attended the Cheese and Wine Festival last year for the very first time. Our business was not open during that time, but we did have a table out of free water. And we went through 32 ca, we went through five cases of 32 bottles of miniature water the first day and six cases the second day. So, I was just wondering if you guys are thinking about maybe putting watering stations or maybe like some Alhambra water jugs, filling stations around the city? Just, I noticed like we were right next to the youth band. So, you know, like when they were done with their sets, they would come over. And I just thought it would be nice if there was access to drinking water around the festival.
Council members, Mayor. Corinne Sanus, I'm a part of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. We wanted, we've had multiple discussions about this. At this time, we're obviously not in a position to take over any sort of festival, but we are willing to lend a hand in support and shadowing for maybe future years to come down the road.
Thank you. Saying no further public comment, bring it back to the council for recommendations and options.
I make, excuse me, I make a recommendation that we go with option one with hopes it'll move towards a nonprofit taking it over.
I'll second it.
Just providing direction, is this a vote?
We're voting.
Okay.
Council members, Campbell?
Yes.
Hussy?
Yes.
Rebe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Sheriff.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.3, sheriff classification change and change the Riverbank Law Enforcement Services contract.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, one thing I just added, we'll have a conversation with Chris and Sue about maybe doing some sort of workshop about some of those concepts of future one where we can just kind of talk about ideas and as we're leading up to it. And we'll be working with Sue and Chris on the street closure and lease and contract and all that stuff for consent item coming up here pretty soon.
In, in the past, we've had some type of public information and had very little, if any, public participation, except for those who are concerned about not being able to get in and out of their driveway.
So, we'll see if we can push it out a little bit and get a little more. Okay. So, thank you very much. This is an item with regard to our sheriff's contract for law enforcement services. In, in the fourth quarter of 2018, myself and my team were notified by the, the sheriff-elect at the time and now the sheriff and the CEO, that the Stanislas County Board of Supervisor would be considering adjustments to the salary schedules within the sheriff's department. Specifically, the request considered by the Board of Supervisors was to implement changes to the classification and compensation structure within the department. So, essentially, what the sheriff-elect, or excuse me, what Sheriff Dircksey recognized coming in, which had been discussed quite a bit within the sheriff's department, was that one of the key issues that the department was facing sort of in an ongoing basis was retention and attraction of deputies. And there are a number of reasons for this, but if you distill it down, one, it, it has to do with money. It has to do with compensation. We have seen in all departments, not just the sheriff's department, sort of a, a flight of officers taking positions in, in the Bay Area and even communities like Tracy that are just over the, just before the Hill for compensation that, you know, in some times is, as much as 20, 30, $40,000 more a year. And so, so the sheriff's job was to sort of figure out a way to get the staffing levels up to what are acceptable countywide. And the goal and proposal was to create deputy two position. So, currently, if you're hired as a deputy at Stanislas County, you, and you're never promoted to some position above that, like a sergeant, you presumably would be in essentially the same salary range for the duration of your career. This allows deputy sheriffs that have two years of experience and complete four train, core training courses to be promoted to a deputy sheriff two position, which is compensated above, 10% above the entry level deputy one position. So, obviously, while we were internally supportive of, of the solution, we were also concerned about what the financial impacts were going to be to Riverbank mid-contract. In response to that, the CEO of Stanislas County offered to the cities that the county would cover 50% of the increase of cost to our law enforcement contract for the remainder of our contract. So, for half of this current fiscal year and for the remainder of the 1920 fiscal year. The total amount for 1819 of an increase for Riverbank would be about $111,000 over our current costs. So, we would split that with the county under their proposal. And for fiscal year 1920, it would be approximately $228,000 and, and change for, for that year. The county has requested that in exchange for the county splitting of the increase, that, I'm going to read this verbatim, additional flexibility in reassigning staff that normally work exclusively with the city to working on incorporated areas when necessary to ensure staffing levels address critical needs throughout the county. He does indicate in his letter that this is not anticipated to be a frequent occurrence and the city would not be paying for deputy salaries if and when they are assigned outside of city limits. So, the real question that I'm sure every council member kind of thinks of is this, what is the practical implications for our law enforcement team and for our coverage within town? I'm going to ask Chief Kylie to come up here in just a moment and speak to that a little bit, but to summarize what he's about to tell you, it's minimal if any. We already provide some courtesy service along these lines when, you know, critical incidents occur or there's a, a need that, that we can step in and help with. And so, at this point, staff does not believe that there is much of any impact to our service levels. And certainly, we would reserve the right to approach the county if we noticed any change to take over the total cost and eliminate that consideration. So, Chief, you want to maybe address that a little just from a practical operational perspective?
Yeah. I'll, I'll say that we're already seeing positive results from the deputy sheriff two position being created. In fact, to the, to the extent that the next academy class will fully staff, we anticipate 15, but the one thereafter, we're already talking about reducing our enrollment by 50%. So, well, to be perfectly honest, it's, it's actually having a more positive impact than even what I predicted. So, that's a good thing. So, we already operate in a manner that if we have a critical incident outside of town or we have a high priority call that's in progress just outside of town, we'll scramble units to it until we can get a main office unit there to go ahead and take over. That's, that's been an ongoing practice for quite some time. The main office knows that I don't want that to be used nor to you, but it is a mode of operation that allows us to go ahead and give a more timely response for those citizens that may live a half mile out of town as opposed to waiting for, you know, 10 or 15 minutes for a unit to get there. Conversely, if we have an incident like we had, I believe it was last Friday, where we have, we had somebody who was wanted for assault with a deadly weapon, the vehicle stopped, there were explosives in the vehicle, we needed more additional units in town as well as a bomb team, and, and we got them. So, it's, there's a lot of flex in the services that we provide. The hard and fast, as far as having our minimum staffing here in town, that we always maintain those levels and, and that's done through, it's basically in compliance with the contract, the way it's drawn up. I don't see any change in that whatsoever. Even, even with a worst-case scenario, I just don't see that happening. What I could see happening, and I, I think it's a remote potential, would be to pull staff from either detectives or, you know, a traffic officer, something that non-essential staffing is what we would probably pull to go ahead and use them for those critical needs. But the interesting thing is, is because we're already seeing relief from the deputy sheriff two position being created, as, as the clock keeps ticking, I believe that we're going to, we're, the, these potentials that we're talking about to pull staff from Riverbank are becoming less and less as time goes on because we're already seeing positive results in terms of recruitment and retention. So, as time goes on and our ranks at the main office continue to be filled and ultimately get to where we're topped out as far as our staffing, I, this potential that we're speaking of becomes less of a likelihood, if that makes sense. So, I, I just don't see, I don't see that we're going to be impacted really at all. So...
Thanks, Chief. So, the only other thing I would add to that is that if the, the total financial impact, if, if the, council to provide direction to accept the county's offer for budgetary assistance along these lines, we would see a current and next year increase of about 100, this is a total numbers, $169,865. About one-third of that would be in this year and the remainder next year. Alternatively, if council were to refuse the county's offer, our total impact for the remainder of this year and all of next would be $339,000 and, $339,732. So, our, our perspective is sort of in line with the chiefs. We are coming up for contracts, negotiations and renewal and, well, our contract's up in June of 19, of 20. So, this will be something that we're going to want to have a discussion about. And I suspect the county will also want to have a discussion about when we sit down for those, those talks. I'd be happy to answer any questions if, if you have any.
Questions?
Does any of this include additional sheriffs or is this staying at the rate we're at right now?
This is current, current staffing however, so the number will increase a little. We do have one deputy that is part of our mid-year that we're requesting to add to the, to the force. And then, as soon as we have an agreement with the school on a school resource officer, it'll be a second too. So, we actually see this policy and change is a good thing because we are able to maybe get some of these officers where the chief and I used to talk all the time that we were waiting a year pretty much for an officer when we request one. Yeah.
Anyone from the public have a comment? Saying none, bring it back for further discussion and recommendation. For the finance, this getting to be very critical with the amount that we're expending on, on this increase and that it will be affecting our bottom line and our, our general fund. While it is magnanimous of the county to offer to pay 50%, the county at the same time must provide relief to the cities so we could pay for it outright through our tax sharing agreement. I believe it's time that we have a negotiator come on out and I'll discuss that tomorrow night because the county, besides the sheriff's department that we pay for, provides no services in, within the city of Riverbank. But yet, we're paying 70% of our tax revenue for property taxes to the county. And I don't see too many county trucks in city of Riverbank helping out with our streets and roads. I don't see any county equipment helping out with stormwater. I don't see anything from the county other than, well, no, you have to do what we say. And this is being imposed one way or the other. And this is being imposed, one way or the other. While it is probably very necessary, I do wanna take a new direction on the tax sharing agreement. So with, for me, I believe that we accept what the magnanimous gesture of the county is, and have them pay for part of our services until we can have a new contract negotiated in 2020.
Yeah, I agree.
I make a recommendation that we accept the county's offer and move forward.
And I second.
We have a motion to accept the county's offer of paying approximately fifty percent of the increases for eighteen-nineteen and nineteen-twenty, and we have a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Yuribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item seven-point-one, staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one comment tonight. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, at six PM, there will be a special planning commission meeting on Crossroads West. Two things about that. First off, I just wanna say thank you to Donna, Kathleen, Michael, Sue, their staff, John Anderson, the city attorney's office, and the applicant team, for essentially, well, and for that matter, the city council too, who have all generally provided support throughout this project. We have spent the last, really since October, in earnest, with our nose to the grindstone trying to get this packet together. There is probably over a thousand pages of information that have been put together over the course of a number of years, and for a small staff, it has been a heavy lift, but we're very proud of the product, we're proud of the, what the commission is going to hear, regardless of the outcome of the decision as it makes its way through the public hearing. I just wanna thank the team because it has been a rough couple weeks, but we're very proud of what we put out, and we look forward to the community and commission and council seeing it here in the next couple weeks. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Yuribe.
So I had the opportunity to attend a standardized emergency management course on February fifth, and I look to take more courses to prepare in disaster events. And I'd also like to encourage any resident not part of a nonprofit to consider joining one. Your support is always welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Fosse.
I have no comments at this time.
Councilmember Campbell.
I'd just like to thank everybody that came tonight. It was nice to hear from the public. This, to me, is democracy in action, and it's always much more exciting when we hear from you, even though we may not be able to do everything to please you. And I also wanna thank the chamber for coming tonight, and I hope to see more of them and see more involvement from them in the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I also attended the Stanislaus County Ag Tech Summit, which is trying to bridge the gap in filling jobs in the agricultural sector through training at our community colleges. And they wanna do this with internships and/or certification. They will also be contacting the city to talk about helping to provide jobs at our Riverbank Industrial Complex Center. And I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we're having a lot of technical issues, I'd like to have any presentation that you put up on that big screen be available to the council members and myself prior to the meeting, so we can follow through where approximately they're supposed to be. Or maybe even reg some way that when you forward a slide, it forwards on our computers.
Yeah, we, we'll route the PowerPoints to everybody, but I can assure you, this will be fixed.
Okay. I would like to also reopen the discussion on the cannabis moratorium. The reason for the moratorium was to observe and see how the businesses performed and if they were able to do what they said they did, and therefore, I'd like to have that revisited. I wanna commend the city staff on the Crossroads West Pacific Plan. That was a monumental feat. We've been only working at it for a little over five years, and it's basically in earnest for the last year. So thank you to the staff on that. With that, we're gonna go into closed session, consistent of item eight-point-one, conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation. At this time, anyone from the public may comment on the closed session item. You have approximately five minutes. Is there anyone from the public wishing to discuss the closed session item? Seeing none, this meeting is in recess.